Hello, everyone. NAACP Salina Unit 4041 would like to welcome you to our Candidates Forum for the City Commission election that's coming up. I want to thank Captain Patricia Salas and Lieutenant Luke Hirsch for opening up the building to us. The young lady back here, I did not catch her name. Thank you very much for being here and letting us host this. I want to thank the candidates for showing up. I want to thank the community for coming out. And with that, I will turn it over to our moderators and the folks that are going to be leading this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
When we planned this discussion, we talked about it being more, instead of more of like a forum, kind of a discussion and a conversation between the community and the people that are running for office. We really want this to be an opportunity for people to be able to put a face to the names that they've heard and get to know something about you and how you feel about what's going on in Salina and some of your plans. You know, this is not a gotcha situation. This is a situation of education and furthering the goals of Salina, okay? This is the second time we've had a forum here in Salvation Army's facility. Last time, we had it on a Saturday. Of course, that was pre-COVID, but we had a great turnout. I think that even post-COVID, we've got a good turnout tonight. This is going to be filmed, and it will be available to the public afterwards. If at any time anybody needs to excuse themselves or get up and leave, please do so. I would like to emphasize that you remember that this is, as well as a community facility, we are sitting in a sanctuary. I want everybody to be mindful of their manners, bring your best behavior, and to be mindful of each other, okay? Thank you all for showing up. I have the first question that I'm going to ask here, and this is one that has come from the audience. Oh, and I'm sorry, I might add that we also sent out questions earlier. If anybody hasn't picked up any, they're back there on the back table. Questions we sent to the candidates that they responded to, and I will say that there were good responses. People were real good about getting this done in a timely manner, and I know everybody's busy, so I want to thank each and every one of you for your time in doing that. So as we begin tonight, the first question comes from someone concerned about North Salina Community Development, of which I'm also a part of, as well as the NAACP. And the question is, "North Salina Community Development has not been discussed very much in the past two to three years by the City Commission. What will you do to change this and provide support for North Town?" And I don't care which order you all want to start this in. We can start left to right, right to left, in the middle to each side. Who wants to go first?
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Smith, we'll give the floor to you.
What I'd like to do for North Salina, what I'd like to see is businesses brought this way instead of going south. What I've seen is a growing number of businesses and, as far as even convenience stores, they're all moving south and leaving Salina, or the North Salina, pretty much empty. I know, growing up, I was around the north side of Salina quite a bit, and being from Salina, my grandparents, or my grandfather, lived right up the street from here. I actually practiced in this facility basketball and went to Martin Luther King Jr., Martin Luther King Jr.
The daycare.
The daycare center. And so, a lot of things have left North Salina when, as far as from when I was younger to now. So that's what I'd like to see, more businesses down this way on the north side of Salina.
All right, I'm sorry. We're giving you a minute to respond to that question, so I didn't want to interrupt you and tell you, hey, you know, make me quiet.
And just a note, too, on that, as Sandy mentioned, this is more of a conversation, so if you hit one minute on the card, please, just finish what you're saying. We're not holding you. We don't want to cut you off. We'd like to hear your full answer.
In full.
But just, you know, don't take too much time. Just be respectful of your fellow candidate's time.
Don't make me pull out the red card. That means I'm done. That's it. Be quiet. Okay, so, anyone else want to respond to that question?
Yeah, I'd be glad to go next. I know there's a small group, and the problem is, is a small group that's worked hard on North Town, and I look at Barb Young, and I know how hard she's worked. I think the Broadway corridor with the medians coming out will be a big benefit to that area. We have a new store going, replacing Walmart. I think that's a benefit. Years ago, when the Hawthorne School was torn down, which was sad for the community, but yet gave them the opportunity for housing, I think that was a big plus. The one thing I see as a concern to North Salina would be, it's a food desert. Even though we do have the store on Iron Street, there still leaves a significant distance between any. I'm not sure how the city addresses that, but I think we should work on at least addressing that. I do believe that if we get into housing, as a commission, we have set aside a million dollars for infill development. Hopefully, some of that can be used by the Chodo. We'll get into that a little later, as far as how that may help develop or rehab some properties in North Salina.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffa. Would anyone else like to take that? Yes, sir?
Well, food desert, that's a new term I hadn't heard before, but Mike's right on that, and you do need some sort of food service in this part of town to make people... The main thing is, you want to figure out a way to make it attractive and that type of thing to get businesses to want to move here. Like Mike said, the Broadway, we mentioned, we've talked about that in previous forums, and getting a start on that is good. There were things mentioned about making it even more attractive. I think there's some cost issues, getting the power lines buried, but that was built, Broadway was built as a highway, and so it's extra wide compared to, say, Ohio Street and that sort of area. But again, the main thing is to figure out, and I don't know if there'd be a group that would want to try and undertake this, I think you already have one, but try and figure out a way to make people want to move over here is the main thing that would need to happen. And I don't have the answer for that, but that's, I think that's what you need.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think one of the most exciting things to happen in North Salina in a long, long time is the mural right down here. The traffic that is generated has been incredible.
Is that the elevator mural?
Yes.
Okay.
The mill. It's beautiful, funded with private money. And I grew up out here, spent half of my childhood out here with my grandparents, and so I know this part of town well. And I think we need to start with revitalizing neighborhoods, and I know with the North Salina Community Development, that has been a priority, and I think there is some of this rescue fund money sitting that could be used for that. And I think if we could promote homeownership, revitalize neighborhoods, the businesses, the grocery stores, the restaurants would follow.
Thank you. Who would like to tackle that next?
I'll go. I'd say I also give credit for Broadway and the north part of Ninth Street. They did an excellent job, I believe, making that look better just to drive on your segue out of town. I agree that we do need grocery stores, among other things, and to bring more people, more housing. We need more affordable housing, and anything I think the commission could do to help that, I'd be willing to investigate that and do it.
Greg?
I'm currently serving on the Planning Commission. I'm on my sixth year. We're very cognizant of the entry corridors or gateway corridors, Broadway, North Ninth, West Crawford. There's been some steps to revitalize the area, and they're going to continue. I think as being on the City Commission, we should foster that. The Atwoods, which is going in, the old K-Mart's located, I think is an excellent jumping-off point. Maybe that will become more of a shopping center. I mean, I think that's going to be a tremendous asset to the city, and hopefully more companies follow suit, and we start to see more activity there, more retail industry.
Thank you. Chad?
I've had this question asked to me or posed to me recently. Why, why is it that North Salina is not fulfilling its potential the same way that South Salina did? And the question posed is, what can the City Commission do, or what, how are we going to spend more time with development on that? I don't know that that's a City Commission responsibility. That needs to be turned back over to the community. The community needs to stand up and make some changes. There are some ideas around that North Salina is one of those areas that we don't have a food desert. Again, that was a new term for me as well, but we don't have the food. Broadway is getting better. The Atwoods, like Greg mentioned, is going to be tremendous, but North Ninth, North Ninth needs some help, and the communities need to get involved with that, whatever it is. If they need to put pressure on the commission and bring some ideas forward, that's what needs to be done, but the community needs to step up in that regard.
I think that's all. That's it? All right. John?
Did you want to ask your question? That was a community question. I can ask a question.
Go ahead.
Let me just also mention that, as was said before, North Salina Community Development President is Barb Young, and she's here with us tonight. And then also, the Friends of Centennial Park are also co-sponsors of this event, of this as well, and Dave Dibelbis is the leader of that group. So my question is geared more towards a Friends of Centennial Park-type question. And again, whoever wants to raise your hand, and we'll kind of keep the conversation going And this, the question is this, and it's a two-part question, is there's been a lot of discussion, just a little background, there's a lot of discussion about whether to do development or follow the Parks Master Plan on some of the improvements that wanted to, that came up in the Parks Master Plan at Centennial Park, and there's been a very active group there. And so the question is, I don't know if you follow that. If you have, great. If you haven't, then hopefully you'll have at least one part of this question to answer. Would you commit, as a City Commissioner, would you commit to declaring Centennial Park as a park and in any and all efforts to give way any part of the park for housing? And do you believe that maintaining and developing neighborhood parks that serve residents should be a higher priority than multimillion-dollar special projects built to attract visitors? Whoever would like to take the first stab at that?
That's a good question.
Basically, the second part of the question, if everybody's not familiar with the second, what kind of priority do you think that parks for residents play over using parks, parks dollars for creating parks for visitors?
Like baseball fields.
Baseball fields, tennis courts, field houses, any of those things? Yeah.
I personally like to see a combination of both. I feel that the neighborhood parks are very important because it allows for families. When I raised my family here, you know, fortunately, we were close enough to, always close enough to a park, and we were able to walk the kids down there, and that gave us something free to do and fun to do, and it was healthy activities. So I'm a very strong proponent of the neighborhood parks. I was on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board for several years, and part of that was when they built housing developments, they had the option to either pay for, I'm not sure exactly how it went, but they either donate so much park land or pay for the difference. As far as Centennial Park, I would like to see that stay as a park because I don't think there's really anything else over in that, in that part of town that would be. And I know they're talking about building houses maybe on the, on the south end of that, but to me, that'd be equivalent of, you know, there's a lot of discussion at Ivy Park about filming the pond and putting houses there, and that's the way I see that, and pulled to that, so. Thank you. Sorry.
It's okay.
I would, I'd agree with Mr. Ivy on the fact of not putting any housing on there. I think Centennial Park is a great park. I've been there plenty of times, and adding housing, I think, would cause more problems for the parks that are there right now. Because I'm kind of familiar, I'm on the parking board, Park and Rec's Advisory, current on the Park and Rec Advisory Board, and I think the plan that they have going right now, as far as Centennial Park, is a good plan. Now, the second part of your question, you know, I think it's a mixture of both because you have to, there is a need in Salina for a venue for youth sports. Right now, it's kind of doing, going down. The kids are not really playing youth sports as much as they used to, back when I was a kid. And so I think, you kind of got to, I would, I mean, that's a good question, and I, I would venture more towards, you know, just building up the sports, building up like a baseball complex, generate revenue for the city, and keep the kids active, and give them something to do.
Thank you. Greg?
I think there's definitely a happy medium in there. I'll go with the first part of that question, Centennial Park. I think it's contrary to the better interest of doing housing in it. I'm kind of curious to see if that gateway corridor thing I talked about, one, if some of the federal rescue funds wouldn't possibly be allocated to that and maybe wouldn't carry over because of the close proximity of that park to West Broadway. And back to happy medium between the two, I think there's definitely sales tax revenue that's generated for people coming in the community. Anybody that has kids and/or had kids in sports, it's expensive, especially if you have kids and a traveling team. Those people come to our town, they spend money, and it does benefit the community. Thank you.
Yep, next. Chad?
The original question was, would you commit, would you commit about Centennial Park? And I'll just be frank with you, I can't make that commitment right now. I don't have all the information that I need. As far as the balance of community parks and larger parks, there does need to be a balance, like Greg was just saying. The other thing that we need to consider about that is all of these parks need maintenance, and they need upkeep, and we're already falling behind in that right now. If we're creating more parks, are we going to fall farther behind in the maintenance and upkeep? And that is a blight on our city for the ones who are coming into town and spending dollars and increasing our tax dollars. So there has to be a good balance there, but I'm not going to commit right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I have somebody else's minute? One minute's not going to be enough.
Okay. We have a minute, 10 seconds.
First of all, I think Centennial Park's a wonderful park. The north end's been developed. I do believe the skate, skate park needs to stay there. I believe the, the community has spoke to that. I think you also need to reach out to some of your demographics. I know there's a large Hispanic group there, and we could maybe put in a one- or a three-wall handball court that plays into that. I'm one that did come up with the idea of doing some housing at the, at the south end of that, and part of that was, we talked about connectivity. Those homes would connect to the park. I thought we could sell those lots, and one of the things that the neighborhood wanted was a walking path. I thought we could use some of those funds that we, we used to, for the sale of those lots, to build an extra-wide sidewalk around the whole park that the community could use. The other thing, I think it was said, is we do have a concern about more parks and maintain it. It does take more dollars to do that. As far as economic impact, I do believe there is a mix. And if you're talking about equality of life when you're looking at ball, baseball diamonds or soccer and those type of things, tennis, and I could get into the tennis a little later as to how that came about, but I do think we need those. We want to continue to bring young families in our community. You're going to have to have some of those amenities. One more, can I do one last thing that might change my mind a little?
She's got a red card, but go ahead. Go ahead. Take a fast one.
One thing that might change is, as you've heard, there's a, there's a group that's looking to develop the old Holiday Inn, and that's going to be a number of units. And if that comes about, I might change my mind a little bit about more of that park needing to be expanded because we're going to be adding a significant number of people to that area. So these are always moving parts, a little bit like Chad. I can't give you an exact answer, but those are, those are some of my thoughts on Centennial Park.
I'm not as well-informed on this as Mike is. That's tough following him. But my first thought was that the parks need to be upgraded. I know, I have a friend that lives by Sunset Park, and there were some issues going on there that they were concerned about losing some things. I know there's a tennis court there and that type of thing. You know, I think you need Centennial Park. It's across Broadway. It's in an area that you need a park there. As far as housing adjacent to it, I would hope that there maybe be, or not using any of that for housing, I would hope there'd be enough land near that that you wouldn't have to dip into the side, into the, into the park itself. But anyway, I'd be willing to look at those, and these guys have made some great comments and observations.
Yeah, I kind of, I know the background of that, that area. That was initially slated for houses, and then Schilling Air Force Base closed, and that ceased. And these people have been begging for development in a park there for many years, and it seems like they've not been listened to. With the Friendship Center there, you know, there is some, some nice amenities there. It could be improved. We don't have to have a whole beautiful Oakdale Park there, but the walking trail, the, we could make it nice. And there again, revitalizing the neighborhood. There needs to be some revitalization there, too, as well. And hopefully, this development with the old Holiday Inn will, will move forward, and that's kind of exciting that it won't be permanent housing, but it'll give people a start. And right now in Salina, for young people to get a start in a house, in a rental, it's cost prohibitive.
Okay. That's all. Okay. My first. Your turn. Okay. I also serve on North Salina Community Developments Board as a co-chair. And a couple of years ago, it's been more than a few years ago, I was still working for the City of Salina at the time, we did a study on first response here in North Salina as far as fire departments, police department, EMS. Right now, we still have no access for those facilities in North Salina if there is a train. What we were told then was that they could use, what, outside of, in Ottawa County, that they could answer to those. When you are in the midst of someone being in a crisis, and my husband died of a heart attack at 37, so if you are at home and something like that happens, and there's a train coming across those tracks, why do we not have any type of a substation first response in North Salina? There are families here. There are people that live here, they work here, they raise their families here, and they're just as valuable as anywhere else, and we have nothing for that. How would you address that?
Can I take that?
Yes.
I'll preface what I'm going to say with, a long time ago, back in the mid-'90s to early 2000s, I was in law enforcement, and for a brief time, I did work here in Salina. And I worked 1B. 1B is North Salina. 1B is large, it's a very large, like, square-mileage-wise, and I've never heard the idea of the substation, and quite frankly, it's a good one. I think it's a very good one, and it's definitely worth a look.
Thank you. And that was a question that was given to me directly from someone at a North Salina meeting.
I would think would be a great idea also. I would think the closest one you have now would be, there's a fire station on Simpson Road, North Simpson Road, Old 40, but I don't know that it's manned, so you need some, some facility that's manned 24 hours a day, I would think. And I've often wondered about that train and how it blocks. I mean, it's just frustrating.
It can be a hiccup.
You're right that, that something needs to, needs to be done, to be fair to this area, anyway. And I would think we try and look at some funding to get that done, work with the police department, fire station, those entities, to see what could be done, at least on a basic level, anyway, to help your needs.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'll, I'll take a shot at this. It'd be hard for me to give a true response without talking to both the police and the fire departments. I understand your concern. I know that there's a, when they build fire stations, there has to be a certain response time. I'm not sure without, without more information as to how they work their way around the trains, because at least now on Ohio Street, we have an overpass that helps. Before, we didn't have that, and we could have had some significant problems. As far as the substation, again, that comes down to funding. Like everything else we're going to talk about tonight, it all comes down to dollars and cents and where those dollars are. I know we have one fire station up on Crawford that's, that we've talked about for years, and I'm guessing Mr. Blanchard has seen that as a commissioner, and it needs upgrading. It's, we have people that spend 24 hours there and sleep, and it's really not a very good facility. So at some point, you have to prioritize. Again, that would be one you'd have to look at. Again, city government doesn't move very fast, so don't expect it to happen next year, I guess would be my, my other comment.
I just want to get it on the table.
There you go. Got to start somewhere, don't you? Okay, Chad, come on.
I feel like this conversation has been had for a long time. I can remember far back, always hearing about, this would probably be before the overpasses as well, it's a little more prevalent then, but the trains, man. As someone who drives around town all day, going job to job, that, that train can take you off schedule. I'd be willing to look into, you know, even at that minimum, if we had EMS on this side of the tracks, to respond to the medical emergencies. I don't know what that would take, but I'd certainly be able to look into it. And then eventually, maybe fire and, and police as well, maybe they, but yeah, I'm for it.
Thank you.
This isn't a new problem.
No.
And the one thing we can say, we don't have near the train traffic we used to.
That only counts if you don't need the ambulance.
That's right. And I know the, the fire department has contingency plans for dealing with it. They have for years. I don't know what they are, but it is a good point. I don't know why anything hasn't moved on it all these years, and it's something to consider. And like I said before, it comes down to funding and manpower. There's times when they're short on ambulances. They do so many transfers, they get short on ambulances and people, and you might have an ambulance coming clear from the south to a call out here. So that is something to look at. Could be a police, EMS, maybe a squad truck station, and Wichita has done that in many neighborhoods of neighborhood police stations. And I think it's worked well for them in community relations, police being right there. So yeah, something needs to be looked at.
Okay. Anybody else?
That's a good question, and I may go a little off-topic here, but I don't see why there isn't one. I don't see why there's, there's no funds for it. I mean, I don't know, not aware of the city's budget, but what I can tell you, and like I said, I might go off a little topic, but if we can build a multimillion-dollar training facility that we don't need, I don't see how we can't build a substation here. That training facility, in my opinion, was not needed. When you can go an hour and a half up the road where they train every law enforcement officer in the state of Kansas almost, and they can get the same training there. So I, I don't see why there, I don't know where the funds went. I don't know why it can't be done. I don't know why we can't close down one of the, what, two or three stations on the south side of Salina and relocate one on the north side. I don't have the answer for that. I will look into it if I get elected and, and go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that hasn't had a chance?
I think the idea of the substation is a valid point, you know? And again, it has to be researched, and we have to come up with funding, you have to do staffing and everything, which is another problem that is not part of this question. But I'm going to break off into something that may be a little bit controversial here. One of the questions that was asked in the packet that we were given was about districting and putting commissioners over different districts. I think by districting, you'll get better feedback from the citizens and from community. You can have district advisory boards.
Exactly.
And you would hear this input earlier, instead of right now where we're, where it's an emergency, you know? What happens if a train is across the tracks? That's an emergency. That's a literal emergency. And so I know it's a little controversial, and I know there has to be research done And so I know it's a little controversial and I know there has to be research done on it, but again, citizen input is always good. And things like this are, are good ideas and I appreciate the input of it. And I think it does need some research and we need to research that out.
Okay.
I might follow up on the district question. It's something that I think is needed and I don't know that Salina is big enough to really have district elections. But why couldn't the city commission divide up? Okay, this is your area, Bill. You take care of this. This is your area, Matt.
Well, those are all great things and just a quick, Linsburg has, does their, does their council that way by districts. I just wanna let everyone know, we really wanna have questions from the audience. So if anyone has a question and has note cards and a pencil, and if you wanna write those down, we can make sure they get back up. When you're done, hold it up and, and I'll come get it from you and, and hand it to Sandy and we'll, because we wanna do your questions, but while you're doing that, we're gonna have a little fun question here.
Your definition.
Oh, you guys will think this is, then this is, it's, it's, it's much lighter. It's not heavy. So everybody here is familiar with an elevator pitch?
Yes.
Okay.
I've just been all ingrained in one.
Okay. A, a good elevator pitch should last no longer than a short elevator ride of 20 to 30 seconds. Hence the name. It should be interesting, memorable and succinct. It also needs to explain what makes you or your organization, and in our case, Salina, unique. So in 20 to 30 seconds, and we'll give you a minute, but in 20 to 30 seconds, give us your elevator pitch about Salina. And of course you can, the brave one will go first and then everyone else has more time to think of theirs.
You said pitch. I thought you said pit. P-I-T.
Oh, no, 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 no. Well, see, I thought you were just going along with it.
No, no, I understand. I'm sorry.
We're in the elevator. But convince us why you need to govern.
So anyway.
So you want us to explain again what you wanted to?
It's just a, it's just an elevator speech. What's your elevator speech for Salina? What makes Salina unique? And if you met someone at a conference or something and you wanted to tell them about Salina, what's your 20 to 30 second pitch on the elevator to sell them about?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Because 30 years ago, we had a chance to move to Wichita. The company I was working for was purchased by Coke Industries. I had a chance to go down there in their management group. We decided not to. Our boys were eighth grade and fifth grade for one reason. Coke moved people around, didn't wanna do that. But we love Salina. It's easy to get around, quality of life, the schools here are great. It doesn't take long to get from one side of the town to the other. And the economy in Salina, I think, is one of the most level. We don't have a lot of peaks and valleys, you know, a lot of downturns or upticks and that sort of thing. I'm sure in 1960, when they announced that Schilling was gonna close, that was a major deal, but we haven't anything like that since then. So it's just a great town. You, you feel like you're in, it's nearly 50,000 people, but you feel like you're in a small town because you go to the grocery store and see people that you go to church with and, and that sort of thing. So that would be my pitch.
I'll, I'll be glad to go next. And I'm gonna follow Mr. Alda a little bit. I think the fact that a few years ago, the community made the, the, passed the bond issue to touch every school. I think that was very important. If you're gonna bring people into your community, schools is the first thing. A lot of people wanna complain about a pothill hole here or there, but if you drive around, Salina has probably about as good a streets as anyone. And I know that started under Mr. Blanchard's watch. They put streets as one of their main deals and we had a sales tax passed and, and we spent about $8 million a year on streets now. We have three higher education. We have Wesleyan, we have K-State Salina, we have, uh, what I still call the Votech out there. We have KU School of Medicine and Nursing. You tell me another community has four higher education facilities like we have. Quality of life, we have a lot to offer with the Stiefel, with the community theater, programs for kids, we have the Field House. I am proud to, to say I'm from Salina and when people come here, they look at it and say, wow, there's been a lot done. And a lot of that's because we have a lot of individuals willing to do private-public partnerships and that's made the, the city's dollars go that much further to, to reach our goals.
Mr. Ivy, we're just gonna follow down the line here.
Um, to me, it's the history of Salina. My, my family's been here forever, started with my great grandparents, to my grandpa, to my mom and dad, to, to me and then on to my kids. It's a good place. I would tell anyone to come here and raise their family. The park systems are great, the schools are great, just, just stuff to do. It's, it's a large, large enough town that we have a lot of the amenities that some of the other towns don't have, but it's still small enough that you basically know all your neighbors and know a lot of people. So yes, that'd be my pitch for someone coming.
I'll keep it short and sweet. What I always tell people, I, to this day, I tell people it's a great place to raise a family. It's very diverse. It's kinda like a melting pot and it's close to two big cities, Wichita and Kansas City. I mean, that's pretty much what I tell people. It's a great place to raise a family.
Yes, sir.
I think one of the greatest things that we have here is very generous people. People that care for one another and take care of each other and they're there for each other. The, the private partnerships that we have had here this last 10 or 15 years, a lot of cities don't have that. You know, we have some very generous people here and I'll give you an example. Here this summer, we were downtown, come out of the Stiefel Theater and a young man with his little toddler walking down the street, he says, are you guys from here? And, well, yeah, I was born and raised here and this is just incredible. He was from St. Louis, passing through, going to Colorado. Then you should be really proud of this. This is just beautiful. And it, that touched me.
Well, and I'll reiterate what Mr. Smith said, it's a safe place and it's a great place to raise a family, which, which I did. I think the schools are fantastic. I think that the, the downtown is something to be very proud of, the art in particular. It's just, I think something in a community the size, very special. There have been references to some private donors in the community, some low-key and some maybe that like to be known, but it's, we're very fortunate to have those people. Our medical community, I think for the size of Salina is, is very, I think we're very lucky to have it and it's definitely something that brings people here. We have industry. I mean, we have one of the largest, we have a large agricultural manufacturing plant that all I've been hearing is what a great employer that is and how they're doing all the job vocational training. We're growing and, sorry, yeah, that's.
Okay.
I had, there was more.
No, go ahead, finish. Finish, you thought I was finished.
It's just, I think good things are on the horizon. I think, I lived here most of my life. I moved away for about 10 years to go to college and I spent some time in Kansas City for my law enforcement career. I came back in 2000 and I've watched this community change in a good way. I mean, positive change, just, and it's consistent and it's, it's slow, but it's, it's there and it's something to be proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Farber?
I am, I have a unique perspective on this. I, I moved here eight years ago, on purpose. I moved here eight years ago. Some of these folks, I'm looking down the line, have been in Salina longer than I've been alive.
That's a cheap shot.
I wasn't looking at you either, John. The uniqueness of it is the moment my wife and I came into Salina, we realized there are good people here. And I believe that's what sets Salina apart from other communities. We're not Manhattan. We're not Lawrence. We're not Wichita. We are Salina. And the people of Salina are great people and we're unique people and we're diverse people. And that is what makes Salina so great. Yeah, we can, we can have better industries and I believe Salina's on the right track. We're, we're going the right direction. We can have, I, I had a nice conversation with a, a police officer a few weeks ago and he said, the one thing I like about Salina is there's a good relationship between people and law enforcement in Salina. I like that. I'm proud of that. The interesting thing about Salina, if I had to tell somebody about my elevator pitch, it would be the people. Come and enjoy the people of Salina.
Did anyone have questions?
Chad, I didn't think I was gonna have to use Ronald Reagan line, but I'm not gonna use my age and experience against you.
I'm older than you.
I was just reminded that we have great churches in Salina as well.
Okay, here's an interesting one. And at the bottom it says, please ask candidates to speak louder. So I, I'm delivering that message.
For real.
Neighborhood blight. And I live in central Salina, so this one hits me right at home because I got a few neighbors I'd like to get rid of. Why does a homeowner have to call neighborhood services to report an out-of-compliance house? Why can't code enforcement patrol and notify homeowners of infractions? First impressions of Salina when driving south from I-70 are terrible.
I'll take that.
Yes, sir. Mr. Langwitz?
I'll, I'll start with the first part of that. I think some of this is a byproduct of the pandemic. I'm hopeful that, and it's my understanding, you know, obviously I'm still the outsider looking in as far as the, the city commission goes, it's my understanding we do have, we bank some funds and hopefully we could use, utilize them on that for neighborhood services. But hopefully once we get back to normal, those guys are back, or those people are back to doing their job and patrolling and, and looking for violations. I'm gonna go back to the I-70 coming into town thing. It's something we talk about in the planning commission all the time. It's those gateway corridors. And it's been a project and it's gonna be a slow-going project, but we're cognizant of the problem and we want to improve it and it's just gonna be a slow process. And I think whatever's going on in the planning commission, we need to foster in the city commission. Thank you.
I'll jump on that too. Code enforcement is, is not a fun job. Nobody likes to see those guys coming around your neighborhood. I'm sorry, I need to speak louder. One of the problems like Mr. Langwitz just said is we don't have the staffing for that. And I wanna, I wanna jump on something that has been mentioned in a couple of forums. Now, Mr. Hoppick, and I'm not picking on him, he's on the commission, so he has some of the inside information of this. He, he mentioned how the city has gone from a seven and a half million surplus to a tw- or seven to 12 and a half million surplus over the last several years. My question is, if we have that surplus, why are we furloughing city workers during this pandemic? Why are the, the people of Salina suffering and not getting a paycheck while we're building up a surplus within the city? And again, I, he's after me so he can have a, an opportunity to answer and I'm not attacking at all.
Looking forward to it.
I'm just wondering why the, the people are suffering. Number one, without a job. Number two, code enforcement. There are places that need the grass mowed. There are places that need the weeds cut down and that's, I don't know that that was a specific answer to that question, but, but that question needs to be raised in our community as well.
Absolutely. Okay.
I guess you should probably never ask a question if you don't know the answer.
Okay.
Part of the reason we have a surplus is because we furloughed employees during the pandemic. We kept every employee whole because of the unemployment, the extra unemployment that was given by the, by the, by the federal government. So nobody lost a dollar. We made sure of that. The, the reason we have that is because our sales tax stayed higher than we thought. When the pandemic hit, we had no idea what was gonna happen to our sales tax base. And one thing I've been, again, our, our parks suffered because of it, but I can apologize to every one of you today because our parks didn't get mowed on a regular basis. But I would sure feel bad if I was sitting here apologizing to you today because we didn't take care of, of our fiduciary responsibility and we've gone from 7 million to 5 million and I was raising your property taxes to make that up. So that's the decisions we made. So nobody lost any, any money. We kept every employee whole. As far as code enforcement, it's kinda that same old thing. It's, 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 it's not against the law to be homeless. It's also not against the law to have your house maybe not painted and upkept as well. We do have code enforcement to make sure we mow yards and stuff. When code enforcement goes out, they look for safety issues. Is it a foundation issue? Is there windows open that the kids can crawl into and get hurt? So it goes from not mowing to a, a dangerous structure that needs to be taken down.
Okay.
I guess I'll follow that. But, so to answer that question, I'd like to give back to the way things kinda used to be where you can, why not help your neighbor? Why not go there and ask them if they need help with something? You don't know their situation? You know, my son, he's 13, I will pay him to go mow the neighbor's yard if I, if I feel it's getting too, too, he'll go knock on the door or I'll send my neighbor a text because I have all my, both, both of my neighbors have their phone numbers. So I'll send, hey, do you mind if my son mowed your yard? And I'll pay my son for that. Let's start helping each other instead of, you know, and kinda complaining about it or, or resolve the situation by helping your neighbor.
Matt said exactly what I was gonna say. That's fine. I agree with you. Another thing is I don't, I don't think we have a, a code enforcement that can just drive up and down the street all day long. Perhaps we do.
I think we have one.
One of the things. So I, I guess, yeah, if somebody has to call in blight, then they have to call it in, but I agree with Matt. Instead of calling your neighbor in, maybe go see if they need a hand, if there's something wrong with them or.
Oh, oh, go next. I feel sorry for you.
Just a minute, you had to talk over this.
No, it's gonna keep going.
Yeah, yeah, just be a little louder. Yeah, just wanna make sure you can be heard. All right.
Sandy?
There you go.
Sandy, I'm sorry for your situation because if I lived in a situation like that with a bad neighbor, I'd really be upset. I, I had a coworker who's, who had a neighbor that would not keep his lawn up. They had code enforcement go out there time after time. They'd maybe just get it done just to pass the bare minimum. There, there really needs to be more teeth into those situations, in my opinion. I'm more strict than that, I guess, but I like to have a nice lawn and my neighbor's new too. But there has to be more teeth, has to be more timely, but again, if we don't have the people out there that can enforce it, that's tough. But again, I understand what Matt and Jerry are saying about going over and helping, but there are some people that don't want that. I mean, they just, they don't, they don't give a darn, really. And that's too bad. I don't know how you change that, but there needs to be something done and, and more, more teeth in that to, to wake them up and be reasonable with their property.
I think this comes down to, again, neighborhood revitalization. If a neighborhood starts getting cleaned up, homeownership, then these people that are not keeping theirs up might be looking, well, maybe I could do that. Maybe I could, uh, straighten this up, haul the trash out. It looks pretty nice over there. I've been told that there's certain areas of Salina that have too much rental property. No offense, Mr. Langwitz, but when there's homeownership, you tend to take care of it. And I'm all for, for revitalizing neighborhoods. Neighbors helping one another, as was said. The enforcement, that is kinda, you know, there's one person, what can they do? I think what would irritate me is if they not pay any attention to what's going on in blighted neighborhoods, but someone calls and complains in South Salina, they're all over it. It needs to be equal, unfortunately.
Everybody have a chance to address that that wants to?
Yeah, everybody that wants to.
Okay.
Do you have a question from, from the audience? I have one if you don't.
Go ahead. Uh, this question is about immigrant. This question is about immigrant folks that are new to, new to town, and how to recruit immigrants. The question, and I'll just preface this with, the, the neighborhood of where Centennial Park is, in that neighborhood, is one of our highest Hispanic population and fastest-growing immigrant neighborhoods in, in the community. It's also one of the youngest. And so, this question was, one of the growing communities in Salina is immigrants. However, little seems to be done to encourage, can't read that word, but, in, in more encourage, encouragement. What are some things that the city commission can do to reach out and provide better experiences for newer and immigrant communities that wanna come to Salina?
I'll take it. Seems like a theme in a lot of these forums, this one included, is everybody's voice being heard. Multiple candidates have mentioned that, including myself, and getting involved in our local government. And part of that is, you know, everybody's welcome at these meetings. I encourage people in that community to come and see what's going on here in town, and go to these meetings and get involved. And I'm sure if there's a language barrier, we can figure something out.
The demographics of Salina has changed. And, you know, it's something that's not going away. We need to embrace it. And many, many of these people, they just want a better life. They're good workers, they're good family people. And I would insist that they go through the process to become legal citizens. I was at an event here recently where Lady just became a citizen two weeks prior, and just the smile and excitement in her face was ecstatic. It is an area that I don't know what the city can do, but we are an inclusive city. We do need the workforce. So, I, I would welcome people, but I would insist they follow the rules and make an effort to become citizens.
Chad, do you?
I'll take the mic before it heads down that way. That's one thing I like about Salina. We are a diverse community, and that, that's a good thing. That's a really good thing. It needs to be that way. I'm also a, a big believer in equality. Each person should be treated the same way, regardless of what neighborhood they live in, regardless of the color of their skin, or how they were raised, or what have you. I think Mr. Longline brought up a good point. Everybody needs to follow the rules. We need to be able to have safe neighborhoods, we need to be able to have eligible workers in our businesses. And I think that is part of our community involvement, and getting more input. Again, I keep going back to the districting part, but if we can get more questions and answers from individual areas of our community, the commission would be more informed, and we will be able to make better decisions in that regard. And, and I know I'm, I'm out of time, but I do take exception to, to the comment down there. Don't ask a question if you don't know the answer. I think the community does need to ask questions, especially when we don't know the answer.
Matt, do you want to?
Okay.
I appreciate you making me not walk back and forth too much.
Okay, that thing is off now.
You know what? Leave it.
They like it. They like it. Okay.
I don't, I don't have a moving voice anyway, so. I, I don't think there's any intentional division between immigrants, the Hispanic community, people of color. But we do need to do something, I believe, to bring, to bring everyone together. And the city's involvement with this could be maybe potentially hosting more events that, that kinda brings everyone together as a community, maybe having, I, I guess I don't know exactly what that event would be, but I would say as a city's involvement, let's, let's, let's make it a more diverse events to, to get everyone together.
I'm just gonna take the, the road that everybody that's here is vetted and, and belongs in our community. I think when we look at making everyone a part of our community, probably looking at our schools is probably the first place we need to look. English is a second language, or, or my daughter taught at a, at Schilling for a while, and you might have a Vietnamese child and one from another surrounding community. They may look the same, but they don't speak the same language. So, it's a lot of, you know, we have a lot of immigrants in this, it's a lot of work for the schools. I'm not sure exactly where the city fits into that, although I think schools, churches for the, for the different minorities is important. A lot of those, they need that. I do believe that the Hispanic community is very family-oriented. I think, again, we talk about parks, you see them on a Sunday having a picnic, part of the families playing soccer.
Give me ten more seconds.
What's that?
Ten more seconds.
Okay. And so, you know, we just need to, to make things available to everyone in our community.
One thing I think might help would be to get some leaders from those demographics involved in some community situations. Because I think if you have the, if you have those leaders from those groups, the rest of the people are gonna respect those people more than they might anybody else, quite honestly. And so, I think that's one thing we might need to look at. But, you know, I don't know what the numbers are on how many, how many people we've got coming in like that. I hope they're legal. Like one of the, one of the gentlemen said, I think it was Bill, I hope they, they would get their US citizenship. I know that's, if you look at Salvador Perez in Kansas City, I think there was a video of him when he got his, and he was as proud of that as he was probably of his home run, home run record. But again, I think we need to, to recruit some leaders from that, from that demographic to help the rest of, of their people.
Kudos to Doug for throwing out the Salvi reference there. Just a quick follow-up on, on that real quick, and I don't know if anybody, Chad, you mentioned it before, but as I mentioned before, that some neighborhoods tend to be growing at a faster pace with, with more immigrant, different, a different demographics than 85% white, which is kinda what the city is. NAACP Legal Defense Fund, as you all know, is very interested in doing single-member or districting type elections for that very reason, because it tends to, you all talked about getting those folks more involved. Well, if they have someone that they can elect from their neighborhood, then they're already gonna be closer to being involved in that. So, Mr. Farber, you already said something about districting and, and how you're in favor of that. It wasn't the questionnaire, but for the benefit of the folks here. Anybody else want to speak to that? Mr. Longline, you mentioned you were in favor of that, too. Anybody else have anything to add that in light of some of the comments that you guys have been up here tonight?
I would certainly be open to it. I would just, I, I have some follow-up questions. Obviously, it's, it's one of those things that once you delve into it, the logistics are probably very complicated. But it's definitely one of those things where I don't feel like it's an absolute no. It's definitely on my radar, and I would be happy to hear any ideas on it.
Yeah. I, I've been on city commission long enough now, I don't, I don't do anything without a study section, so. Kind of a joke there, but...
Well, Brian, study session.
But, and I think the way I answered on the questionnaire is, I do have questions as to how that works. If you have two individuals running for mayor, does one of those then not fall into one of the districts to serve? I mean, so there's questions about, do you lose a qualified person there? I do have a concern, if you only have one person in a district that's running, is that really an election, you know? So, there's different things that we need to study, probably look at other communities to see how it works. I'm not a yes or a no, I'm a, I'm on the fence.
Well, we do appreciate all of your answers to that, and, and we do realize that we have an education process to, to bring all of you up to speed with kinda where we are on that as well. So, thank you.
I have the next question. I do not need that. When advocating against mandatory masking, such as the things that are happening at USD 305 schools, candidate Farber, you and some others have vocally suggested citizens pull their children out of schools prior, prior to the state's annual pupil count to punish the school district by reducing its funding. This tactic would result in loss of school funding, cuts in services and activities, increase in out-of-pocket expenses for parents, and the next generation would not be prepared for the future by disrupting their education. The question is, how do you balance activism or your personal zeal for a particular issue with the responsibilities of leadership and stewardship for the greater good of the community?
I guess I'm the first one to answer.
Do you want, do you want that first? Okay. Well, I think you...
Do I need a microphone? I have, I've gotten more response from my addressing the school board than I have for anything I have talked about as a city commission candidate. And I'll say this, when I was addressing the school board, I was not addressing it as a city commission candidate. I was addressing it as a parent, as a citizen of Salina, and I stand by what I've said. We as parents are responsible for our children. The school system, whether it's in Salina or anywhere else in our country, is simply a tool that parents can take advantage of in the training of our children. Parents have the responsibility, and if they feel as though the school system has overstepped their bounds, or they are doing something that they disagree with, parents not only have the ability, but the responsibility to withdraw their child from that situation. If you as a parent think your child is being abused, or mishandled, or what have you, whether it's in a school system, whether it's in a church situation, whether it's in a, a park, you as a parent have the responsibility and the opportunity to remove your child. If that happens to decrease the funding of the schools, which I understand, there was a date of September 20th, and there was research that was done upon that, then so be it. Let that be a wake-up call to the school system. The school system gets a lot of funding, and I know they had a meeting tonight, and they even approached the subject of increasing the mill levy again for us. The school system gets a lot of funding. We as individual parents still have a responsibility to take advantage of that funding, or to take our children somewhere else and encourage that schooling. I know not everybody agrees with it. I know it's a controversial thing. Boy, I've heard the comments, but I still stand by what I said in that meeting.
Somebody else?
You sure? I'm gonna change.
Smash that one.
That'll work. I'm gonna change gears a little bit in the sense of, you know, kinda wearing different hats, and kinda as a citizen versus a commissioner. And I think the question kinda flows into, like in my case, I have a business, and can I put my business interests aside and for the city? And I, I have a voting record where I've done that. I've voted in planning commission for multiple projects that compete directly with, with my rental property and property management business. And I figured it was worth at least a mention.
I would echo what Mr. Farber said with the situation with the schools. Parents have had it. They are at a breaking point. We've seen, we're seeing it all over the country. So, what happened here is, is nothing unusual. And just like the, the city commission, the school board is accountable with the parents. As far as the root of your question, how to balance activism versus the greater good of the community, I have core beliefs, I have core values. And at some point, there will, needs to be a balance between my values, my beliefs, and the people I represent. I don't think a person needs to go into any elected office with the idea of he's gonna be an activist, and it's gonna be this way or no way. We need to remember, we represent the citizens.
Well, I'm gonna start off, can you guys hear me okay? I'm gonna start off by saying, you know, I've heard, we've heard as the city of Salina, this has divided the city, the mask issue, the mask mandate, that is, this has divided the city more than I've ever seen. And my opinion is, if it, wearing masks helps to save a life, I'm all for it. I don't think it should be a big topic. I think that the kids in school are wearing masks, I have three kids in school, they're wearing masks to protect theirs themselves, other kids, and the children, or and the teachers, I'm sorry. So, I mean, I don't understand why it's an issue. I guess that's, why is there such a big issue on wearing masks? I mean, they help save lives.
Thank you. The, you know, if you didn't agree with what 305 did with masking, by all means, take kids out of school, homeschool, and put them private school, whatever you wanna do. But I don't agree with pulling them out just long enough to, to lose the funding. That, that doesn't hurt the school, that hurts everyone else's children. So, I, I ultimately don't agree with how that was said. As far as masking, I'm for the choice to mask. I know, that's, it's just from the research that I've done, I, I feel like, you know, if, if you wanna wear a mask, by all means, wear a mask. If it helps you, then it helps you. But in my case, I don't wanna wear one, because I don't know that necessarily not wearing one doesn't, any effect to the person wearing one. Sorry.
The first thing I'm gonna say is, the mask mandate, or, or mask in whole have become controversial. Please respect one another. You have no idea if someone has a health issue, or if they've lost a family member. So, what we need to do, first of all, is respect each other. I highly disagree with what Mr. Farber said at the school board meeting. I was watching it. I have two grandchildren in the tenth school, I have two, two children that teach in the school district. You might be mad at the school board, but what you're doing is you are punishing the students, and you're punishing the staff by taking money from them. It takes X number of dollars to run a school, so if you're suggesting people take their school out, or their kids out to, to lose that funding, you know what we're gonna, they're gonna do next? They're gonna raise your mill levy, because they're gonna raise your property tax to pay for that schooling, because it takes X number of dollars to run a school. It, it bothers me when I have somebody running for city commission that has that mindset. We get bullets shot at us all the time, and you better, you know, you need to be ready for it, and this kind of action is, is not what's best for the community.
Well, one of the questions we had to answer for the Salina Journal, there's gonna be a publication, I guess, that they're gonna feature the, the city commission candidates, probably school board, was, what is the city's role in keeping its residents safe and healthy during the COVID pandemic? My comment was, we need to follow local medical advice and use common sense. I'm big on common sense, by the way. Citizens, including neighbors and friends, have different views on what is safe and what isn't. That's, that's what we've been talking about, is how divisive, masks started being divisive in March of 2020, and it's only gotten worse. I don't like, I don't care for masks. I don't, I only wear them when I need to. I really feel sorry for a school teacher that has to wear them, or anybody that has to wear them eight hours a day. I have six grandkids, and my wife and I do, have six grandkids in Kansas City. Two of our, our both daughter-in-laws are teachers, they all have to wear masks all day. It's not any fun, but it just, you know, the, the decision wasn't the city commission on the school issue. The school board, I think, made that decision, and so we really can't overstep their bounds and change that. But they're the ones that thought they were doing what was best for the most students and people involved.
You all were so beautifully chaotic and moving around to begin with, and you went right to linear. But those are great, good answers. We appreciate all your answers. Do you have another question, Sandy?
Are we done?
No, we're not done. There are plenty more questions. Are there some more?
There's some more questions.
You have a community question?
Yeah, we still got community question. Okay. There was one. Okay. Hmm, this is interesting. All right. Why are job sites advertising for help, and yet people in Salina are not getting hired? From restaurants to factories, the city's saying they're short of help. They say the city HR says they can't get people to apply. HR at Russell Stover says no one comes to apply. Why? And is unemployment high in? And is unemployment high in Salina?
Let's go that way.
Well, I don't know the number on unemployment in Salina. I would guess that it's pretty low in comparison to nationwide. I don't know whether to answer, how to answer this question, but, you know, for a while, the reason people weren't applying for jobs is because the government decided to pay them more than they could earn at their jobs. And that's not right. That's kind of a lazy mentality, in my opinion. I was taught to work, and I don't think that there's much of that being taught right now. And, you know, we went on a trip in mid-August, went to North Carolina and that area, the number, the most popular sign we saw was now hiring. We went to Bob Evans just for a simple lunch. We went in there, and there was 25% of tables empty. I thought we'd get right in, they said, well, there'll be a 25, 30-minute wait. I said, why is that? Well, we don't have enough staff in the kitchen. There's been all kinds of changes like that. So, I don't, I don't know, I mean, there's plenty of jobs, and I don't know why people aren't having enough gumption to go out to work, but I don't have an answer for that.
Beverly, I think first you've mentioned something about the city. At the city, we just passed the other day a pay-study plan, because I know for a few years, the city had frozen wages, so we're gonna look to see where we stack up against other communities and stuff. Because if you're gonna get quality people at any business, and the city's no different, you have to, you have to have a wage that is comparable, and we're looking at doing that. I do believe that people will go to work if wages go up. I do believe with the new jobs, I think, we haven't talked about that yet, but we have about 1,000 jobs come to Salina in the next, by 2030. I think that competition will help raise wages, which hopefully will get more people back to work. The other thing we haven't talked about is, we have a real problem with childcare. And it's not just Salina, it's across the United States. And what we have a problem is, what we paid the childcare workers, and what they need is a wage, there's a gap there. So as a city commission, I don't have the answers, but I think what we need to do is, would you turn that thing off? Kill me, girl.
Hey.
Is, what we need to do is, we need to get our partners together, the Chamber of the EDO, and the businesses, and figure out what we can do to fill that gap. And I think if we can fill that gap, we can incentivize people to get back to work.
There are jobs available. I'm not aware necessarily why people aren't getting, getting the jobs if they're applying for them. I know two of my children lately have just switched jobs and didn't have too much problem with it. I don't know what, I mean, if we're suggesting discrimination, something like that, then something absolutely needs to be done about that. Businesses need to be taking the task for that. I agree with my, childcare is big, that's a tough one. We were fortunate enough that we had grandparents that helped us out with that. Not everyone's fortunate enough to have that, but maybe we could look into some of the bigger corporations and businesses, maybe providing that for their employees. I think we're behind it now.
There you go.
I would agree with Mr. Hoppick. I think that the wages that they pay here in Salina aren't enough, and I'm glad you mentioned, you mentioned Russell Stovers. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. So that is another job that's out of town, that's in Abilene. Now, you have, you see people in Salina, they're going to Pfizer, they're going places in McPherson to get jobs. That's what I've noticed a lot of my friends are doing, because the wage, the wages we pay here in Salina aren't enough. I think we need to bring better-paying jobs here to Salina, and that would help also with the unemployment, because no one really wants to work for little to nothing.
This is not a Salina problem. It's nationwide, and it's a time in history that who would have thought we would see what is going on today? And people I've talked to, no one can really put a finger on it. It's asked, you know, how are these people making it? What are they doing? And it's a societal problem, and there's no easy answers. One thing I have heard, though, is people that are getting benefits, well, if I get a job, I'll lose those benefits. If I make this much money, they'll cut back, and that's sad. That's, that's heading towards socialism. The first part of your question, applying for jobs and not getting hired, we got a real problem with drugs. We got a lot of people that cannot pass a drug screen, and it's a societal problem.
First part of that question regarding the city and hiring, I really can't speak for them. I'm a planning commissioner, which is basically, I'm a volunteer. I'm not part of the hiring process. You know, my guess would be, I mean, there's obviously hiring criteria, and it would be a question for HR, whether it's, some things that are deal breakers would be criminal history, failed drug test, et cetera, but again, I can't speak for that. The second part of that question, I think the linchpin to things would be competitive wages. And part of that, I'm a believer in the free market, not necessarily coming in as a government entity and saying, hey, you need to pay X number of dollars per hour, but what's gonna gradually happen, you know, obviously, there's, there's other manufacturing plants in the area that are paying higher wages, and if some of these other companies want employees, and good employees, they're gonna wanna raise their, their wages to compete. And that's, I mean, to me, I think it's just gonna take time, and it's just gonna, it's just kind of natural forces, but pretty much it. Thank you.
You've heard some good explanations of what's going on all the way down the line here, and I'll echo what Mr. Longby, Mr. Al said. It's a shame that people were accepting government subsidy to their unemployment or what have you, instead of going out and finding a job. In fact, I was on a Facebook post, I didn't comment, I was following the comments, and it had to do with this issue, with salary disparity, and why, why don't people pay what we're worth? And I was disheartened, and I'll tell you, I was disgusted by some of the comments that said, if I'm only gonna get paid $8 an hour, or $12 an hour, I'm only gonna give them $12 worth of my day. That's a shame. I'm looking around, a lot of people that know, you give a full day's work, and you earn the money that they give you. Perhaps if you got in the door at $8, $12, whatever it is, an hour, and you show that you work hard, and you earn your way up the ladder, then you could make more money. Government dependency is a big problem. I don't know that the city commission has any bearing on raising or lowering the salaries in Salina. It has to do with, with competitive wage market and that type of thing.
While Sandy finds another community question, I have, I have a question I'm gonna ask commissioners, candidates, but I also want all of you in the audience to participate, so you can see their response, and they can see your response. So I'm gonna ask a question, and I'm gonna ask for a show of hands, if everybody can just play along, they're super easy questions. As all of you, most of you know, and I want to preface this by saying, thank you to all of you for being willing to serve on the city commission. It's a huge commitment, it's a huge time commitment. One of the things that we hear a lot is that city commission meetings begin at 4 o'clock, and it makes it really hard for both, for working-class people with nine-to-five jobs to not only be able to attend meetings or view them live, but also it makes it so that they're not really able to run for city commission, because their work schedule doesn't allow them. So, my first question is, and a lot of the community boards do that as well, we appreciate everyone that serves on advisory boards. So by a show of hands, if you are currently serving or have served on a City of Salina advisory board?
If we are now, or?
If you are currently, or have in the past, served on an advisory board, put your hand up. Okay. The second question has more to do with the first question I asked. A show of hands of those that would be in favor of starting the meeting at 5:30 or 6 o'clock, or at some time, that would allow working-class people to participate more?
Yeah.
I, I saw you guys, and that was promising. And I didn't see Commissioner David Slade. Your handles have good. All right. Do you have another question?
You know, I just, there was one question that was asked, just like the question about the response system here in Salina. And this came from North Salina Community Meeting, and the question had to do with, what I'm really surprised, too, of you said you never heard the term "food desert" before. And the question had to do with, and I, I'm sorry, I'm a sociology major, so I'm real familiar with the term "food desert." The situation had to do with the young man that asked me this question, he's somewhere that, someone that recently moved to Salina, and wondered why we did not have a store such as an Aldi's here in North Salina. Nobody's saying that the store on Iron Street was not needed, but when you look at what has been done to North Salina, and I say "done" because this, I, I've lived in a lot of places, and I'm originally from St. Louis. I know about projects, I know about Cabrini-Green, I know about Curitigo in St. Louis, and I know what a neighborhood looks like when you ghettoize it. And North Salina has been gutted. We do not have a school, we do not have, well, you know, even with St. John's Military School, we at least have a school. There is no school here. So you've removed some protections for drugs in North Salina because of the enforcement of drugs being within a certain area of a school, so you don't have that, that's gone. There is no area for fresh groceries, except Fresh Market. I've heard a lot of talk about people not wanting to work because they're getting free money. As someone who has lived on welfare in her life, let me just tell you that if you had to live on $8 an hour without someone else supporting you, you would live in a doghouse. So, I, I kind of, to say this is, we've asked for everybody to see each other's side and see each other's story. And I don't want people to make the assumption that people out here that are trying to work, and some people are working two and three piecemeal jobs to make one decent salary. And this is true, this is here in Salina. We have more organizations now that give away food, that are trying to help people because it is a struggle. And not to mention the fact that we lost how many people in the pandemic. We lost lives, people, and that adds up. That adds up to a glut, a gulf, a gap in our system, and a lot of those people that have died were childcare workers. And childcare is a trip, trying to find a childcare situation is really bad, because number one, those people don't get paid enough, and if you're making $8 an hour, you can't afford to pay childcare. So, I guess what I'm asking is, where is the compassion? Where is the plan for not having Salina have a ghetto? When my 12-year-old grandson can ride around with me and listen to me talk about North Salina, and never say the word "ghetto," and he looks at me and says, "Bee-bee," because that's what they call me, he says, "Bee-bee." Have they turned the north into, into a ghetto? I said, "They're trying." So how do we turn that around?
You first.
I guess to start with, a lot of you probably have seen the movie What About Bob? Sometimes it's baby steps. I know we have individuals that have been lighting up properties, Chris Helm's one of them, here locally, I'd like to shout out to, has taken really rundown properties and made those properties inhabitable. We currently have a CHODO, community housing development organization. We've set a million dollars aside for infill development out of the American Recovery Funds. I don't know how, but I can see some of those dollars going to that organization. Gary Hoppy's been doing that on his own, I'd like to see that expanded. We need to start with, maybe it's house by house, to make the neighborhoods nicer, and then the other neighbors, I think, will take pride in their, their properties. I cannot answer you why we no longer have, have what I used to call "Gibsons." We used to have "Lamers Market," there in those. I can't tell you.
We used to have "Smedleys."
Yeah. So, I can't tell you why those are gone, and I'm not sure why no one's made an investment in those. Again, that's probably not the city's job, but it doesn't mean the city can't be involved in having those conversations with the community, and those are things I think we ought to do. I do believe that, for a long time, North Salina was neglected. I think because of the North Salina group and the work they've done, it's come to our attention. That doesn't mean everything's been done it needs to be, but I think there are positive steps being made in that direction.
Thank you. I'll get to that.
All right, thank you.
Well, it's a difficult question, and it's not easy to answer, like Mike said. One thing, and that was kind of a question that you had on our questionnaire, was about wages and that type of thing. Some of that has to be on the individual themselves. Most of the better-paying jobs require some form of post-secondary education. I'm not talking college. You know, there's, there's VOTAC, and trade schools, and that sort of thing. So, what I think the city commission can do is make sure that we keep those, those entities running well, and try and get them to recruit, and get the young people that are struggling, get them to get some, some sort of post-secondary education, because that's really, it's a supply-and-man deal, and if you don't have the qualifications, if somebody needs to pay you more, it's, it's just a vicious cycle, and it's too bad. And again, it's difficult. Thank you.
Sorry to make you do that.
No problem. He's getting his steps in. Yeah, there you go.
Well, actually, I'm gonna expand on what I was gonna say, Mr. Al brought up a good point, too, but I'm gonna refer to my experience in the planning commission, I can tell you, there are a couple of projects, I mentioned the one earlier, the Applewoods, replacing the Kmart, definitely being a linchpin to some good things happening on Broadway. That trailer court in North 13th Street, it's been leveled, and it's gonna be a bunch of, you know, basically modular homes, they're all gonna be the same, it's gonna be managed by one company. I think it's a tremendous step in the right direction, because I, I used to work at Sed 1B, and I, I know that trailer court, and I don't think it's changed much in the last 20 years. It's probably gotten worse, I would guess. Back to what Mr. Al said about vocational training, trade skills, we do, I think there's a, we have a manufacturing plant in town that's doing on-the-job vocational training, and as you progress through the program, you get paid more money. I think it would be nice to see other men, other companies doing the same thing, and I don't know if there's something that we could do as a city commission to help facilitate that. I think that's what we're looking to. Thank you. No worries. You're served.
Again, good comments down there, and I think the comment that Commissioner Hoppick said down there pretty much sums up my ideas, probably said it better than I could have. What he said is not necessarily the city's job, but conversations can be had between the city and the community. And I'm a big believer in that, the community needs that input to the city commission. We need to know, we, the city commission needs to know about these ideas. The question has to be asked, though, how did North Salina get gutted, to use your term? There's, there's a sad domino effect that takes place. When the community and the housing and the area starts to go downhill, there are good people that decide to relocate to different areas. And as the good people, and I know none of us are good, I'm a pastor, I know not everybody's good, but when good people and good families relocate to other places, that leaves room for others to come in who do not have the same values of those that left. And it's a domino effect where the community can continue to trend downward. As far as the answer for that, I don't know that there's an answer. I believe all of us care about Salina, that's why I worked here tonight, but the communication and the conversations with this area, I think, would be beneficial.
Do you mind if I do a follow-up on?
No, go right ahead.
I don't want to violate the format.
No, make it real brief, because I think we got Jerry Wilson.
I wanted to make a real quick comment about that corridor entry project being part of it as well.
Yeah.
I think that's important. Sorry. Thank you.
Well, Sandy, I've never thought of North Salina as a ghetto. I come out, and I
I come out, and I drive by my grandparents' house, and I cherish the memories. And there is good people here. The grocery store part, the food desert part, I think you can blame the green bus, I can't think of the actual term for it, but I call it the green bus, and the Walmart effect. Because I remember Smithley's, spent a lot of time at Smithley's. The wages, someone else echoed about having the desire to improve yourself, to educate yourself. We're in a place today where we've got kids coming out of high school, don't know how to read a tape measure. You know, is it the schools failing, is it the parents failing? But, it's a tough situation, and people got to want to improve their life. And that comes back down to my comment about ownership. You know, if you own something, you value it, you take care of it.
You remember me saying that I had a couple of neighbors I'd like to get rid of? They both own their houses.
Oh.
Well, I think this goes back to districting. I think that if you have someone that, from your community, that can represent you, that would help. Also, and this might be a bad subject, but I think the Commission has had people that, as long as, kind of out of sight, out of mind, as long as they don't have to see it, as long as they don't live in that neighborhood, they don't really care about it. And I'm going to kind of ask a question. I don't, in the past two months, I don't, how many of you guys have been past the north side of tracks, and actually been there for a while? I mean, how many people have done that?
I have.
Because I don't see a lot of people on this side of town, I mean, I don't, I, like I said, I come down here frequently, and I just don't see people that actually are on the Commission coming down this way, because they don't have to see. I went over to, I can't remember the name of the park, on North 13th. I took my kids over there, and the whole, the playground's covered in mops, or there's some kind of grass. What is it, the park down street from my dad's house, on Woodlawn? That park is, these parks are not being maintained. Nothing is being maintained on the north end, and I think, but if you go to the, I want to say, I'm going to call it Country Club Park, I guarantee you, that park is clean. I guarantee the grass is mowed, I guarantee it's taken care of. Jerry Ivy Park, same thing. You go to Sunset Park, which is a little more to the south. I went by that park, I actually took pictures, so I could take it to the Parking Recs Advisory Board. That park was looking horrible, it had a leak in the fountain. I mean, and I don't know really the demographic of a lot of the City Commissioners, but I would say that most of them live either east or south, and then I'm really, I'm North Salina. But-
Are you giving him the red card?
I'm going to give you the red card.
You keep tipping up that red card, I'm going, "Did Matthew the red card?" Think you're the last one.
All right. I guess, I can just say, I know, I realize now, I appreciate the question, that there is need for more stuff down here, namely grocery stores, you know, the things that you mentioned. And I'd just say, if I'm making, if I'm making on the Commission, I'm going to make it a point to, to visit with the North Salina, the association, you know, the community, to find out what they want. I'm open to anything as far as communication. You need something, you want something, you know, give me a call, give me an email. Brian knows where to find me, he can help me there. I'd just be willing to do what it takes to communicate, and find out what needs to be done to solve those issues.
All right, well, that was the last question. Yeah, it's 9:00. Yeah. 9:00, so we are going to do a closing, because early voting starts tomorrow, we want to give each of you an opportunity to say something, and then let people know where they can go to get more information about you. Before we do that, we want to thank a few people, once again, thank you to the Salvation Army for opening up this venue again, once again for us, we greatly appreciate it. I'd like to thank Salina Media Connection for recording this, and a recording will be made available, so that you can share it with your supporters and people that might be interested in doing this. Also, to let you know, the Salina Media Connection no longer is funded by the franchise fees in the City of Salina, so if you have an event that you need anyone to tape, please get ahold of them. They'll do it for donations, they don't have funding, but they do a great job. So thank you to them. Thank you to Friends of Dave, and Friends of Centennial Park. Thank you to Barb Young and North Salina Community Development. I'll just let you know that North Salina Community Development meets on the third Thursday of every month, at 7:00 PM, right here. So I encourage all of you to reach out and attend some of those meetings. Salina NAACP meets every third Sunday at 3:00 PM, at the Salina Art Center. We also, I don't know if we have membership forms, but if you're interested in becoming a member, our membership fee is $30 a year, and we look for all the help that we can get. So, and a big thank you to everybody that, from the public that came out tonight to this forum. We appreciate your being here, and we, on our program, we put, "A well-informed electorate is a prerequisite to democracy." And so, thank you for coming out and informing yourself, and thank you, again, to all the candidates for providing, I think, great answers. I hope you liked the format that we had. I think it was real beneficial to all of us, and I think we got to see a different side to all of you, and we certainly appreciate you.
Excellent.
So, we're going to do the, whoever wants to go first can do their closing.
We go off the bat.
And Doug?
You get a minute each. And yes, this time I am going to enforce the card. We're ready to go.
Okay. Well, I've been in Salina for 50 years. Came here November 22nd, 1971, to start my first job with the grain company out of college. Like I said, I grew up on a farm. And then we got married in January of '72, so that's going to be 50 years coming up. So we've loved this community, and I retired then, at the end of 2019, and so now I feel like I have the time to serve on this Commission, it takes some time. I'm sure my employer would have let me do this if I'd wanted to before, but it really didn't. When I work, I work, and I had a full-time job, and I didn't just work 40 hours a week. So, anyway, I feel I'm qualified, a lot of business background. You can look at my website, it's alt, the number four, salina.com, gives you a lot of information about me and my background. But, I really, I look at this as a way to give back. I'm not really a politician, I don't look at myself as a politician.
That was tough. Yeah, and it does go fast. I guess we're all up here for the same reason, we're asking for your vote to be elected, and it's not for the paycheck, let me tell you. For the most part, I think, serving on the Commission for four years, we've made good decisions, and we've moved the community forward. I'm proud of what we've done. When I ran four years ago, I made the comment, that at some point, I will make a decision you don't agree with. And I'm guessing I probably kept that promise. I hope when you look to vote, and you look at my record, you don't just look at one way, that maybe I voted against something you wanted, because every day, I have to look, and sometimes I have a 95%, I know I'm going to vote for something, and the other times it can be 51, 49. And at the end of the day, you have to vote one way. I've raised my family here, I still have two of my children and two grandkids, Salina's still the best place in the United States to live, and I want to continue to be a part of moving us forward.
You beat the buzzer.
They want that red card.
I was born and raised in Salina, Kansas, I'm fifth generation, married, and have three children who were all born and are raised here. Salina's been a great place for me to live and raise my family. My goal as a City Commissioner would be to keep it that way. I've worked in small businesses, and I have been in the trade all of my working career, I can use both of these assets as a Commissioner. I have the ability to multitask, and to concentrate on more than one issue at a time. Salina has way more needs than one particular issue. I would use my time to work on affordable housing, that seems to be a pretty big topic. And if elected, I look forward to representing all the citizens of Salina, and I hope for your vote on November 2nd. I can be reached, I don't have a website, Facebook, just search Jerry Ivy for City Commission, you'll find me. I'm open to comments, if anyone has gotten in touch with me, you realize I will give back to you quickly, and I think I've proven that to some people so far. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Matthew Smith, and I was born and raised here in Salina. What I'm hoping to do, the reason why I'd like your vote, is I'm hoping to build a better future for Salina, for our children, and for the future Salinians. So, I would like to run my campaign on transparency between the citizens of Salina and the City Commission. I'd also like to work towards more affordable housing, also affordable healthcare, that's, those are my number, my top three goals, and that's it. Thank you.
I thought we were going to have an opening.
You can do your opening and closing, just make them brief.
I'm going to try to combine it. But I would like to make a statement here, before I do that. I listened to a speaker Sunday who was from Ireland, and he made the claim, the people table, "There's nothing we can do, we can't, we don't have a say, there's nothing, up in Washington, in Pico, there's nothing we can do. But, right here, there's something we can do. It starts here at home."
That's right.
So with that, I am Bill Longby, I'm a third-generation lifelong citizen, this is my home, I've never left. I'm 62-years-old, been married to my wife Donna for 40 years, this November, we raised two sons, Jonathan and Caleb. I come from a working-class background, my grandpa worked in the flour mill right up the street. My dad, a Marine-turned-auto mechanic, worked at Marshall Motors right up the street. I've spent the past 45 years working in local industry, I have a good understanding of the struggles hard-working people make on a daily basis. I would make every effort-
Go ahead, I'm going to let you go. About 10 more seconds.
I would make every effort to be transparent in decisions and actions, and I would welcome more involvement and input from citizens. It would be an honor to represent you as one of your Salina City Commissioners, I ask for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out, taking interest in local politics and our community, I think it's a big part of getting things done. A little bit about me, I'm second-generation Salinan, my kids were raised here, went to local schools, I feel good about where they grew up, I feel good about the town, I was a public servant here for a while, and also serving on the Planning Commission, on my sixth year currently. I've owned a local business here for the last 21 years. I believe in this town, it's not perfect, as we discussed during this meeting, but I think it's a good place, and I think we're headed a good direction, we just need to keep it pointed in that direction. I can tell you, being on the Planning Commission, there's been a lot of good things coming down the pipe, it's just, some of these things need to be fostered and encouraged down the road. One of my things is, despite political affiliation, I want to keep this as nonpartisan, apolitical as possible. I look at this as more like a logistical, or the mechanics of running a city. So, that's my intent, if I get elected, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Farver, you can end.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, I think this is what is needed for our city. I had a closing remark prepared, but I'm going to go off the cuff. You asked if we enjoyed this type of forum. I do. I enjoy hearing from the people, I enjoy the feedback. It's not always pleasant getting the feedback, but I enjoy the feedback, and I would hope the City Commission in the future would consider doing something like this, a question-answer circuit perhaps, and get it to different parts of town, and get some feedback from the community, even if the district thing is not done. I, like I told you, I moved here eight years ago, I am a pastor over at Central Baptist Church. If I am blessed enough to be on this Commission, I choose to be a voice for the people, all of the people of Salina. With that, I'll bring my background with being a pastor, I want to inject godly principles into our community. We need to treat others the way that we want to be treated, we need to treat others with respect, and I believe Salina is a good place to do that. I love the people of Salina, and I want Salina to move forward in the future. Again, thank you all, thanks for hosting this tonight, this was enjoyable for us.
One last thing, and that is, is that some of the candidates have signs and/or literature that they have to give to you, and we would just ask, we're going to have, Salina Media Connection's going to make a recording of this available, and we're going to try and get our questionnaires also available to everyone. But hopefully you learned enough about some of these candidates to help inform your friends. Now that you're informed, help inform your friends, support the candidates that you agree with, and would like to see on the Commission. That's why we came here and did this. But we're done for tonight, thank you all for coming, and let's show our appreciation for the candidates.[1783.93][1783.93][applause]